May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mormon. Dr. Nemecus.
Here.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Mr. Weinbrenner.
Here.
Mr. Noble.
Here.
Ms. Inzer.
Here.
Mr. Lane.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Due to the tardy nature of our start, I'm sorry. Sorry, everybody. I'm going to forego the president's report tonight and ask that we go under the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. I will hand off to Dr. Holland.
Hi. We just have a quick update for the student body. Student council just worked on Catholic charities where each grade was paired with a family. And we went this weekend to Target and bought like a list of all the different things that they asked for for the entire family. And then during our meeting today, we wrapped them.
And then also in the month of November, we participated in a food drive for Cool Food Pantry. And we made it a competition between each grade to bring in different things. And so that was very successful. We had a lot of participation with that, which was awesome.
And our freshmen won, which is a good way to start it out. We've been working on our senior class gift, which right now we're thinking is going to be a either like a mural or like a poster or something in the gym that has the lyrics to the fight song on it, just because a lot of the students don't know it. Or something to add to the doors going into the gym, but we're still having some discussion about that.
Also, we are planning our winter formal dance, which is in January, January 25th, I believe. And so that's kind of in the works, figuring out decorations, ticket sales. And then we're also going to be doing like a spirit week leading up to the winter formal, which will be fun.
And then finally, next week is finals, so all the students are just starting to get ready. And they have like, none of the kids have anything after Tuesday this week, so we're all finishing up quizzes and tests tomorrow and then we're supposed to study, so hopefully that happens too.
Thank you both. So I'm gonna make some connections also regarding semester exams next week. Over the past few years, we've put a lot of systems and structures in place to make sure that during winter break, everyone has a break. A part of our emotional and social wellness work has really been around giving students opportunities to disconnect and enjoy being kids, enjoy their families over winter break. And we've added some additional parameters this year just regarding assessments. Last year, we learned by closing down Power School as well as making sure teachers did not give homework to students to complete over break. We learned that there was an influx of assessments or tests right before exams were given because everyone was trying to squeeze things in. Went through a process of collecting feedback from parents and students, and that's where that information really came from. Gathered a committee together and in response to that, we have no assessment days that Sarah just mentioned that are in effect this week. So students will not be overwhelmed with assessments right before exams to squeeze things in. And so all of that is a result of feedback that we received last year after trying something new. So I want to thank everyone for that. It's, our teachers are adjusting, but it's definitely the right thing to do because we want to make sure that we are mindful of the impact of homework and assessments on our students. Additionally, this week, PLT, personalized learning time, is happening on Wednesday and Thursday, right before semester exams. We use our two late start days rather than having one for faculty collaboration. We use both of those to make sure that students have access to their teacher. So just want to remind everyone that Wednesday and Thursday are both PLT days and students should come in and meet with teachers or access our resource centers during that time. Thank you.
I want to update the board and community on recent activity from the administration and our teaching staff. We just had a presentation at a conference speaking about sharing strategies for systemic change at the school district level. There are three catalysts for change that we discussed there. One is the need to learn by seeing examples. And we highlighted two different districts that we had visited to go and see people who are doing things that we had either not yet seen or not yet imagined. Second is the importance of outside evaluations, the first of which highlighted four areas that we needed to work on. The first was capturing a rigorous core curriculum for all students. We've talked about that a great deal is having a guaranteed and viable curriculum for all students, which seven years ago was the beginning of that work that we did not have. Also, infrastructure to ensure that all students attend the school and class they would attend if they did not have a specific disability. Bring students back from out placements, for example, was part of that. Establishing procedures and processes and also funding for our staff is a particularly important thing to clarify what the expectations were for our staff. And finally, teaching and learning and building staff capacity for all of our staff. We're conducting a second independent evaluation now, a needs assessment, examining our practices and identifying the supports and the capacity that we have for all of our administrators and our teachers. Some of the results that we have as a district over these last seven years is a drop in the number of students who have been identified with an IEP or with special education needs dropped from 18% of our student population to last year's 12%. And part of the reason for that, give credit where credit is due, has been the build-out of support structures for all students, known as the multi-tiered systems of support that Dr. Holland has brought and really honed and sharpened so that we could look parents in the eye and say, yes, we now have the supports necessary for your student and they no longer need to be in special ed. The third factor that we talked about was the need to be persistent and then to be more persistent, and that is in all areas, particularly when it comes to continuous learning. We want all of our students to be challenged and grow. We want supports to be utilized. We expect and see that supports are utilized by all of our students, not just specific students. We're at the juncture now where we need concerted significant professional development and progress monitoring. And we also recognize that staffing will be a crucial part of executing against the increased support needs for our students. The other part of the superintendent's report, we are going to have one of our recent state champions come and visit us, but she was too busy to come and see us because she's at the national tournament this week. So she'll join us at our next meeting. Thank you. Complete superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you, Mike. We're about to move into public participation. And before I do, there's a couple of things I want to clarify about our processes. We are talking amongst ourselves as a board about how to extend and figure out how to capture and respond to public comment in a more thorough way, in a more complete way. So I look forward to sharing those ideas with the community soon. But having said that, we are here to listen. We love public participation. We love seeing people here. So with that, I wanted to say, are there any members of the public who would like to address the board?
All right. Let's move on to the reports. Alan, our assessment report.
So first of all, thank you for having me. Every year at this time, I come before the board and present, and I always appreciate that opportunity. Really, the goal of this report is to take a look to see if we can communicate any patterns for growth, identify potentially areas that might require further or deeper focus, and then also just to highlight some of the successes that we've had. So we want to be able to think critically about what we're doing and grow, but also acknowledge where we've done things well. So the board has the full packet, but I've just highlighted a few. And the request last year, when I didn't have as many images or charts and graphs, was to bring some of those back. So I was cognizant of that. And I know I couldn't pick all of them. And so in the interest of time, I'm selecting a few. And if you have any questions or about ones from the report, feel free to ask. The first one I want to talk about is just the idea of rigorous coursework in our core departments. And so a couple of things that you can see here. So it's important to take a look. English and science see a pretty steady pattern of uptick, of growth. Math has had very, very sizable increases of almost, you can see there, almost 20% and 14% even in recent years. But the one thing that I was talking to Mike about last week that I think it was a good thing that you brought up, important to acknowledge some of the work that District 67 and 65 are doing in having more students try to access algebra. That ability for students to do that in middle school has definitely helped students access more classes at the high school level in math. But that is one that we see impressive gains. The other thing I want to mention, not on this slide, because the title as he looks says honors and AP enrollment. One of the things that doesn't fit, because these are the four cores that I wanted to just speak to for a moment, is our dual credit offerings. And so when you look at even this year in 1920, this is, you can see while this is the 1819 report, on this slide, I did include on the far right in red, 1920 enrollment in those departments. We have another, probably 130 students this year taking dual credit offerings, which are certainly college-level, certainly rigorous offerings specifically in Spanish and in accounting. And so over 85 students are in a dual credit Spanish 5 that we're offering, as well as almost 36 or 38 students in dual credit accounting. So the focus here on this slide is about rigor. I think that speaks to increased rigor, and we're going to continue to try to look for opportunities for where kids can have access to rigor, because rigor can mean a lot of different things. It can show up in many different ways. It doesn't have to have an AP before it or the word honors before it for something to be rigorous. This is a slide on our ACT scores from last year's 1819 school year in terms of the breakdown of the sub-scores. And so our composite was 26.3. That remains pretty steady over the last five to six years. We had a little bit of an uptick in the April of 2018 ACT assessment, but that 26.3 composite was right back to where it was pretty steady. And the sub-scores, if you look, English, reading are still continuously high, and math and science are at the high 25s or low 25s. One of the things that we did here that I wanted to highlight and why I put it in red at the bottom, when we see students access increased rigor at the freshman level, those students in math or in English that accessed those higher level courses, they were in the top 5 or top 9% of the nation in their composite scores. And I felt it was important to talk about that or to pull those students out because it does speak to a little bit what you were talking to earlier, Mike, just about the fact that when you give kids the chance to experience rigor at a younger age, you expose them to that, that's going to give them more opportunities to continue to chase that rigor down the road. Again, that doesn't have to be in a specific area of study, but it can be in the areas of study that they would be passionate about or that they would be interested in. When we kind of stretch and expose them early, we open up those opportunities and we want to continue to be able to do that. And so when I look at, so for example, while social studies is not a sub-score on the ACT, there's certain critical reading, critical writing that manifests itself in social studies and in English. When you deliver that type of curriculum, especially, especially at the freshman level, you then open up the opportunity for those students when they're sophomores, juniors, and seniors to take a more diverse array of course offerings because they've been exposed to that critical reading, critical writing, just general critical thinking overall. I kind of went back and forth in terms of the SAT suite. I had a couple of slides in my report that I pondered sharing. And this was one I wanted to share because, so this year's class of 2020, so our current seniors, they have gone through a PSAT 9, 8, 9, PSAT 10, and the SAT. So we have three years of data on them. And the class of 2021 will be the very first class that will be a cohort that will have gone through the full suite of SAT assessments, 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th. And so while we're not there yet and we don't have enough data over long periods of time, it is just interesting to take a snapshot. So if you take a look, this is a cohort of students. So there's a couple of other parts of the report, which is heterogeneous data on different classes of students. This is just one class as they work their way through the SAT suite. And you're able to see where they've grown from 1062 to 1131 to 1207. And that, that number one, the composite growth ranks in the 63rd percentile, that's on average. So that meant from 9th to 10th grade and from 10th to 11th grade. The 9th to 10th grade growth was high and the 10th to 11th grade growth was a little bit higher. Our math and our evidence-based reading and writing are well within expected growth. For you in the audience, if you see ERW, that stands for evidence-based reading and writing. So the ACT might have their reading portion, right? And they might have their English portion, and they might have their writing portion. ERW is that evidence-based reading and writing combined. And so it's just, there's not as many sub-scores on the SAT when you get the formal report. And then I already mentioned number three around the fact that next year's graduating class will be the first cohort to go through all four years. And we have had work with ECR to try to create a, basically like a growth norms table, if you will. And so that's going to help us. In partnering with ECR, they have collected data from all Chicago-area high schools to try to look at growth from 8th to 9th, 9th to 10th, and then 10th to 11th. And I've actually shared that with Mike. And we can continue to decide as a district how we want to use that. Doesn't mean we have to use that. But I know as a board, you might be always wondering, Alan, it's so early in the game still regarding the suite. How are we going to track that growth to see if our students are making adequate growth? Some of what ECR is providing us, because it's based on our local data rather than national data, I think it has the potential to help us. And so what ECR has done in that capacity, I think it could aid us down the road. If that's something that, you know, you want to further investigate or pursue down the road and you want me to share thoughts around that, of course, Sheila can share thoughts around that. But that has been helpful so far because so many people in my role in area districts, when we go to regional meetings, we're constantly looking for, well, so how much growth is adequate growth? And what ECR is now doing, because they've got a couple of years of collecting that data, they're able to norm it a little bit. Yeah?
So Dave, when we talked about the KPIs and the growth metrics, this is exactly, Alan sang it a whole lot better than I did last time, but this has been the work to basically, that will let us have basically a growth model. And from that, and then essentially this comes back to like the map scoring and the map testing that 3rd through 8th grade has. So this would let us really be on par with 67 and essentially lead, I think, that example of that because the evidence and the information is so strong. So this will be, this will be great for us to have.
So finally, the last main slide I have with some data on it is the one that talks about students taking at least one AP class. When I share out the full data, I talk about the number of students who have taken an AP exam, or I share the data on the number of students who have gotten a 3 or higher. I do believe that all of that is important. I really do. But the idea of a student simply even accessing an AP class, having that experience, we know there's a lot of power in that. And so I'm very, very pleased at that continued uptick. I know it was only small, from 45.2 to 45.5, but I'm happy that we continue to go up every year. And our enrollment has gone down a little bit, and yet the number of students accessing an AP course and even performing well continues to go up. There's not, it's not in the presentation, but in the report, I talk about the fact that, you know, we've continued to have more and more students access AP classes and our pass rates have continued to be outstanding. And that is pretty typical in most districts who maybe didn't have, you can see, 23% five, six years ago, and now we've doubled that pretty much. And so that's noble and good, but it also speaks to the power of a student having that experience. I've stood before you, before you every year, and I continue to say that that number needs to go up. I'm giving you my opinion. That number, sorry? How many get a 3 or higher? Got to go to my other page. One second.
90%?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, I think it was 88 or 87. I need my reading glasses, actually.
No, I've got it here. I had to look over my glasses. 89%.
Thank you. Yeah, 89. So. I'm sorry? Well, it's taking into account whether we offered fewer AP classes five or six years ago or more now. It simply enhances the opportunities that students have. But we always factor all the AP classes that they've taken exams for every single year. And certainly, to your point, the more opportunities you have, you hope students access those opportunities. One of the things I wanted to bring up about this is we get a report now from College Board called AP Potential. And we're really trying to drill deeper on that. So for example, last year's student body, there were about 370 students that College Board referenced or provided to me that had AP potential. Out of that group, I uncovered over like the summer while I was looking at data, that there were still 61 of those students who this year were not taking an AP course. So that can be for a variety of reasons, right? There's the, there's the human element, there's the narrative to selecting classes. So I don't say it to be critical. I say it because I think that there's absolutely more work to be done. And the more that we can provide, for example, our counseling department with who those students are and have them have those conversations with those students, they might direct them in another course that they're really passionate about. It might not be AP, it might be a dual credit offering. But what I'm really trying to say is the more intentional we can be about making sure students experience that rigor, that's great for us as a district, but we know that that's great for kids. And so I think that that is something I want to point out that we're going to continue, when you talk about an area of growth, we want to continue to strive because I think that that number can go up. It should.
Do you just want to add that there were also students who weren't identified by College Board who took AP classes and did very well? So part of our discussion is more around how they're identifying kids and also what we know about our own kids and their passions and what they are interested in and ways to make sure that our conversations aren't just driven by the reports, but what we know about kids and really pushing them towards things that they're really interested in.
That's an excellent point. And you know, if you look at area districts who may have students who might say on the lower SAT assessments, PSAT 8, 9, you could have other districts close to us that would see students whose scores are quite lower than our 8th graders, 9th graders, or 10th graders, and yet they encourage those kids, like Dr. Holland is saying, to take an AP course. And as she's pointing out, they have wonderful success. Because there's so much about motivation and work ethic and touching base with your teacher, and I overuse the phrase all the time, it's a marathon, it's not a sprint. But my gosh, you can't judge a 9th grader, a 10th grader in October in an AP class. Think of the gains they make from October when they're struggling to April or May when they're really finally getting in a groove and getting it. So it takes some time. And that number, we're going to continue to focus on that. I know I am, and I know that I've got to be more intentional about how we do that. I'm proud of the growth, but there's more to be done.
Alan, in the future too, and I think I've seen it at some point, I know indirectly, breaking down by year, because I know obviously, like we talked about the student maturity, growth, everything. But do you have a sense from freshman through senior year, what the percentage involved in AP is each educational year? And I know it's tough because I see they all mature differently, but you know.
That, that, no, it's a great question. I don't have that for you off the top of my head. I can get that. I mean, we don't offer AP freshman year. And so we see a sizable jump of students who access it sophomore year. I don't have hard numbers for you, but I can get you that. I know I can disaggregate the data that way. But we definitely see a big jump in sophomore and junior year. And in senior year, it can go either way. You have some students who don't want as many APs as they had junior year because they're focused on the admissions process and so on. Other students are so set on getting into a top-tier school that they'll take as many AP as they can. So it might build from two to four to six. But I don't have hard numbers, but I'm happy to pull that. It's true. No, it's a valid point.
That's a really, that's a really significant point.
Well said. Thank you. Thank you. So in conclusion, some of the things that you've already noticed from the different slides, so with ACT, our scores continue to be stable. Our sub-scores are in high percentiles. We have seen a large portion of our students meet the yearly benchmarks of proficiency with the SAT suite. There's more really to come on breaking down those skills and there's nuances to the SAT. It is similar to the ACT, more so now than it was, say, four or five years ago, but there's still subtle differences and we're trying to unearth those and uncover those. At the end of the day, I really do think that the critical reading, critical writing element of it, the math skills tend to be very, very similar. But there's nuances to how the tests kind of are broken down that we want to continue to investigate. AP, we're very pleased with the students taking courses and how students are performing on those exams. Says our overall pass rate remains high despite a higher percentage of students enrolled or taking the AP exam. So we have more and more accessing it, and we still have great sustainability or stability for the pass rate. And then that last part is the academic rigor. That was the first slide I talked about, which is really around the core areas. And if you averaged all those together, which I did not put on that slide, we see a collective increase of 12%.
And one of the last pieces, I know the overall pass rate, you're talking about receiving a 3 or greater, but also, I mean, from a practical standpoint, in general, do we have any actually who failed the class, not from an AP test, but from a Lake Forest High School, you know, getting an F in the class? Or does, I mean, everyone passes?
So what I hear you asking is, have there been students who may have gotten a D or an F and rocked it on the AP exam?
Can, I can, I can speak to that. I have a child who flunked the class and got a 5 on the AP.
That's also just an interesting metric, because you talked about challenging.
I can spell his name for you if you'd like, so we have that in there.
You'd mentioned challenging the rigor to provide the environment. So it'd also be interesting to see how successful those children that we challenged to come up into AP are, not relative to scoring on a standardized exam per se.
But on their grade?
But how successful they are just in the class. Or like how many of those kids come in and get a B plus or an A, don't take the test, but leave with a great experience, saying this was outstanding versus how many?
Absolutely.
I mean, the one you know being an aberration because.
Right. Absolutely.
And I do want to add, Alan, into that, I should mention, that's an indictment of my child, not the education system, just so we're all clear. That was his fault, not, not the school's.
Did you learn nothing of the hearings where you shouldn't bring children into the conversation?
It's upward of 94%, 95%. It's incredibly high.
Yeah, we looked at it just the other, just the other day. Last year, 95% of our parents still had kids take the ACT.
There has been almost no drop-off at Lake Forest High School, which is very, it is unique compared to, you know, the state of Illinois. Obviously, in the data report I showed you, you saw how many students were taking the ACT in the state of Illinois five, six years ago and how many are taking it last year. It's, I mean, it's a third. Because they're choosing to take it, right? As opposed to those who go to area high school. And in April of every year, they sit down in a desk and take the test that's before them, which the state adopted the SAT. So yeah, it is incredibly high.
And how long is it? Do you know how long it can last in different states?
I think it's one more year. I think it was three, I think there's a three-year...
The question was, how much longer is the state contract, the state of Illinois with SAT? And Mike thinks it's another year. That sounds about right.
I believe it's a three-year contract, and we're in year two, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct.
I think it's important to mention that our adoption of the SAT suite was not based on the state adopting it. We chose the SAT because it was more aligned with our academic course program, our academic program, as well as when we created our growth model, that is assessment that we felt like would tell us the most about how our students are growing and learning in relationship to our academic courses. We did vet both, both assessments for our growth model, and we chose the SAT. It happened that later that year, there was an adoption as well with the state taking the assessment. One thing that we have done is we hear our community and we know that the ACT is still a priority. So, even through our test prep courses and other experiences, like we are hosting the ACT, I think this week, we still provide access to that assessment for our families because we know it's valued in this community.
So, answer to Tom's question earlier about students that are taking, the state report card has early college, so tenth grade, we have thirty percent of our students, eleventh grade, sixty-seven, twelfth grade, seventy percent overall, over the four grades is the forty-four percent.
And I think, again, when you look at the number of students who have made it to junior year, who have not tried one, and we're at sixty-seven percent, Mike said, and then we go to seventy, my assertion is we should go up by more than three percent.
Go from one out of three sophomore years to seven out of ten.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'd like to see more students who, by the time they're doing their scheduling junior year, and they're sitting down and they've never taken an AP course, I just would like to see that number continue to go up. I just don't want them to be able to leave without having, and again, I shouldn't always say AP, because again, I think, I think that rigorous experience can show up in many different ways. But that's just one way by which we're measuring it from the data that we're looking at today.
Ellen, can you go back to the slide with the four subject areas up there? I just want to point something out. Keep going. Right there, the math. So, you look at fourteen, fifteen, these are honors and AP enrollments in the department. So, it's driving an awful lot of the honors and AP achievement at the high schools, the fact that sixty-five and sixty-seven have really tried to get as many ninth grader or eighth graders as possible to complete successfully Algebra I in eighth grade. And if they do that, they have a pretty good shot at winding up in senior year stats or calc class, AP stats or calc. Great, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, now an IASB resolutions report from our own Sally Davis.
We, for the first time since we've been on the board, actually voted as a board to give direction to how we wanted to respond to some of the resolutions that were presented at the Illinois Association of School Boards' annual meeting. So, because we received community letters through email, we also had community members come and speak to us, I wanted to just let you know how that all shook out. Jenny Zinser and I attended the IASB annual conference, and I went in as the delegate for the vote on the resolutions. There were four hundred and fifty-one districts represented at the vote, which only constitutes fifty-three percent of the state of Illinois districts. There were sixteen resolutions presented for votes. We had voted as a board, both because of what the community said to us and the recommendations of Mike Simic, that we vote no on four of the twelve. And I'm just gonna stick to telling you how those came out. The one that garnered the most interest in, from the community, was proposed resolution number one, called Student Safety. And just to refresh your recollection, it was to advocate for legislation that would enable the school board to allow any district employee who met their criteria to carry a concealed firearm on school property. This was a retread of a resolution that had been raised the year before. There had been a great deal of sound and fury about it. I want to say that it was a relatively tense but civil environment in the ballroom, and everybody got to be heard, and it was a better indication of democracy in action than anything I think any of us have seen on TV in a long time. I was, I was kind of proud of America, because we did a good job in there. It did not pass, and it failed by a vote of one hundred and ninety-eight for, two hundred and forty-nine against. The reason, though, that it was not a blow-up the way it was the year before is because there was another resolution, Resolution Three, that we had also voted to say no to, which is a school safety grant program. And that was to advocate for the creation and funding of a school safety grant program to assist districts in hiring school resource officers or security personnel. So, Wheeling School District offered that as an alternative to the, any district employee who passes criteria can carry a concealed firearm. And that seemed to resonate more and be more acceptable to what I would call sort of the middle-of-the-road crowd. That passed two hundred and eighty-nine to one twenty-six. I did vote against it because that was what the board had wanted. The two things that I heard that were kind of interesting on the hard no's and the hard yeses that I wanted to mention is that the Resolution One folks who had proposed the original firearms one didn't like it because they said their problem isn't funding, it's finding people who will actually take the school resource officer job. And that's very much a downstate versus upstate, or urban versus rural issue. The other reason for opposition from what I would call the more middle-of-the-roaders was that the proposal allows for the hiring of not only school resource officers who go through specific training, but security personnel. And there was some concern that that could be read too broadly. There was also a provision in there that allows for private funding, and that was, that people were nervous about that. Just quickly, we also had voted against Resolution Four, which was to allow any school district that had previously had a private police force to reinstate it. That was proposed by Peoria, and it seems relatively specific to their circumstance. We voted against it, it passed two fifty-four to one sixty-two. And we also opposed Resolution Six, which was the school safety traffic zones, which was to urge adoption of legislation for a variety of more restrictive, driving restrictions around schools. And that also passed. The other resolutions, we voted in favor of, and the remaining twelve passed. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the Education Committee, Tom?
We have not met since the last board meeting. We have a meeting coming up December eighteenth at seven-thirty, Emmett High School.
Great, thank you. December eighteenth, okay. Finance and Ops, Sally?
We met this past Wednesday, December fourth. The most important thing that we talked about was the review with our auditor from Miller and Cooper of the final audit report for the closed school year that was eighteen-nineteen? Eighteen-nineteen. It will be in the record, it will be filed with the state. The highlights that Betsy Allen, our auditor, shared with us that I'd like to just mention to you, she, again, noted with appreciation our administration's professional and thorough cooperation with the auditors. They said it, you make it much more easy for them. She reported that District One Fifteen received an unmodified clean opinion, which is the highest level of assurance they can provide. So, let me just pause and say thank you, congratulations. And as further evidence of how clean the report was, they didn't even issue a management letter. Nothing required explanation. The only other thing I want to mention is that we did ask some questions in reference to the forensic audit that was, that we ordered earlier this year from the McGovern and Green firm following the discovery of misappropriation of athletic funds by a Lake Forest High School employee. Betsy said that the auditors confirmed that the district had adopted all of the recommendations in that forensic report. She emphasized, and I thought this was important because she had to say it to us multiple times, "The district's existing processes enabled the administration to detect the misappropriation, the system worked the way it was supposed to." And she said to an auditor, "That detection is an indication of the strong controls that the district already had in place." So, once again, well done to Jen and her team. She also explained that the incident does not need to appear in the audit because it does not meet the state's criteria for inclusion. The only other two things we talked about was an initial conversation around what we currently charge the community to use the school's facilities, and we may have some follow-up conversation then at our next meeting, which is in February. And we also took a short preview into student fees, which we will dive into in more detail at our next Finance and Ops meeting, which might be February eleventh. But we will post it.
Just to add to that, I agree with everything Sally said, but it came up in our meeting tonight, that our fund policy, we don't have a coherent policy. When I first got on the board, we were, reserves were low, down to eight percent, and the goal was to get back to ten percent. Now, our policy is ten percent or something more. So, I think at the next finance meeting, we have to, probably every board member should be there, and we should develop a coherent policy because as we adopt the levy tonight, our fund balance will be going somewhere between twenty-three and thirty-two percent. And thank you taxpayers for all that money.
Okay, Policy Committee report.
We did meet just last week. We adopted quite a laundry list of policies, and a lot of those will be up for a first reading. Most of them actually were just to incorporate law changes. So, it was primarily under, you know, footnotes and the like. Then there were a couple additional ones where, as far as taking care of kids and whether we decide to allow what they call non-allocated drugs, primarily things like EpiPens, if there's a student in crisis that needs to be dealt with immediately before, you know, paramedics can arrive. And so, that was, you know, something that we discussed. And then there were two other policies that we decided to table pending further discussion. And Jenny, did you have anything to add to that?
No, just, I agree, it was, we reviewed over thirty-five policies. I think the bulk of them had to do with Board of Education member duties and responsibilities, and also then employment in the workplace, so that that covered the balance of what we discussed.
We will have a first reading on most of those tonight.
Thanks, Ted.
And then also, just since it wasn't in here on Liaison Reports, Northern Suburban Special Ed District hasn't met since our last meeting. Next meeting is this coming Wednesday. I'd love to see you guys there with me, if anybody wants to go. And I did just get a report from our superintendent, Dr. Schneider, who attended the TASH Conference, which is the special ed conference, that was just held in Phoenix. He tended with, I believe, one other, possibly two other people. Good conference, good stuff for special ed people.
Great, thanks, Ted. As a reminder, on the Liaison Reports, sometimes on the NSSCD, we gotta put it back in, because otherwise, we're gonna keep it out pending notification from you that we should add it back in, because if it's something important, we should add it in. Ed Redd, we're gonna skip over tonight for the sake of time. So, John, thank you. We're gonna move into the resolutions, and I want to remind everybody, here's the policy we're gonna use for the resolutions. We ask for the motion, we ask for a second, we have discussion, then we move to vote. Okay? So, I'm gonna start with the first resolution, may have a motion to adopt the two thousand nineteen tax levy.
So, moved.
Second.
Okay, prior to the roll call vote, we're gonna talk about it. And on any of the things we have to talk about, we will. The conversation around the tax levy for the board was actually a pretty big one. The reality is that we're sitting in a very fortunate place. We have, we have students who are really achieving. The KPIs, the state report card, it reflects a very, very positive position through the objective measures the state puts out for other schools. So, we're sitting in a very good place there, and that's actually as a result of a lot of hard work that Dr. Holland and Mike and other people on the staff have worked hard to achieve mission, vision, and values that we align to as a board, prior to anybody, I think, but Ted being on the board, that had us invest a lot in how we go and educate students, and how we interact with students, and how we interact with staff. And that work and the investment that the, that the community has made in the high school has yielded positive results. Additionally, we have done things like worked hard to determine how can we get our reserves up as a board. We did have a clear policy as a board, which was a reserve under the ten percent minimum threshold that we were at six or seven years ago is not, according to our bylaws, where we want to be, and it's not a good place to be. We knew that we had to fund initiatives conservatively, and we knew that we had to advance our reserve up to allow us to be in a position to not be below our own prescribed threshold, which is ten percent. And so, today, we find ourselves at a twenty-two percent reserve, which is an attractive place to be, okay? The reality is, we can choose what to do, now with a little bit more of security and safety for the school than we could have done otherwise. I also want to make certain, as we, as I'm about to tell you why I'm giving you this background on this, we are very much in favor of the educational platform that we've landed on. I know a lot of teachers, I hope, actually, I don't know, I hope some teachers are watching this video, but the point is, I want to make sure that we support them. They need to know we support them, we support the mission, vision, values. The idea of inclusion and making sure there's an inclusive educational platform is something that we favor and are gonna continue to support. That said, where we sit today is that we need to, we need to, we need to look at the reserve, and we need to consider what we're gonna be doing in terms of the tax levy for the community. The fact is that tonight, we're gonna ask for a vote on a tax levy that has us taking the CPI increase of one point nine percent, as well as the additional levy that can come from new, new real estate and new properties. However, I want to let everybody know this. We are going, we're doing that because we haven't determined exactly where the ultimate fund balance should fall. We're doing this because there's a few more elements that we do need to determine to have the tight fiscal decision that we intend to have, and that Jen's already committed to, that she can have. When the March levy comes through, we will have more information, and we can assign the exact levy that we're gonna take to the community then. That's not something that wasn't without debate. There's some debate behind that. But the reality is, we're sitting in a very good position as a school district, and we're sitting in a very good position as a high school, and we're sitting in a great position with our teachers and our students because we've chosen to act in a very measured manner. We're gonna continue to act in a very measured manner. But I'm telling you now, that, that will have us take a levy that may be an increase over the levy we took last year, but it won't be the one point nine percent that we could take through the, through the CPI formula. We're gonna measure twice and cut once, okay? So, it's, it's important that everybody understand, we take this very seriously. We have worked hard to be in a position with our students, our teachers, and our budgets, and everything else to be able to start looking at. Now, since the community has supported us in this position, how can we do what's right for them? And that's something that I'll tell you as the board president, as a board member, I'm gonna make sure we do. So, I want, I want you to understand that I am gonna recommend that we pass the tax levy proposal in the package today. But I also want to tell you that you should hold me accountable to make sure that we're looking at it all again and coming back in after the March processes come out with the county and those techniques to see actually where it ended up, okay? So, I wanted to let everybody know that. I wanted to reflect what I think was the conversation amongst all board members, but having said that, I'm one of seven. If anybody else wants to add anything, please feel free.
Dave, I just want to thank you for your leadership on this and the time and the energy it's taken from you, and I think we're all on board. I'll speak for one of seven. Very much on board with everything you've said, and I think, again, prudence is doing what we're doing tonight, but clearly with a vision of being responsible in March, when we can define exactly what that number should be, from whatever the range it should be. But it's, but it's definitely not going to be at the top number of what we've talked about, but I completely appreciate your willingness to hear everybody's points of view and share what you've done in a thoughtful manner. Thank you.
Sally made a good suggestion. Jenner, can you explain what I'm suggesting we pursue now? Jenner, can you explain the, what I'm suggesting we pursue now? The actual figure, but the, the process?
Sure. So the board, in order to levy anything, has to adopt a levy by the last Tuesday in December. That's what's on the board's agenda for tonight. That is the maximum amount that you can ask for. You have one more opportunity to make adjustments to that down. You can't make adjustments after tonight up, which would, I think officially the date is April 1st, but I usually get the information back from the county sometime in March. So with direction from the board, we would be able to reduce that to whatever numbers the board would like to see. So that is your second opportunity.
All right, any other comments or questions?
Okay, I'd like to, I totally disagree with the rest of the board, and normally, you know, we try to act with a unified voice, but we had our initial levy discussion last month, and tonight, we have our final levy. As said, we were actually sitting at 23% with this. We can go as high as 32%. And the difference in the importance of people to understand is where we get our money and how we spend it. If we, we're talking about capital improvements and capital expenditures, normally that should be handled by referendum, and that way, it's not seven people voting on it, it's 20,000 people who get to vote on a referendum. What we're voting on now is just to increase our piggy bank that we can use, and we've been using it for capital expenditures. We did the first floor improvements, we did some security improvements, because basically we're taxing the, the residents of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, Knollwood, Arden Shore and Shore Acres, much more than we need to. Tonight was our last best chance to say thank you, and we don't need to take an additional levy. I voted for 0% across the board, and I think we just made a big mistake here tonight.
Okay. Look Ted, I appreciate your point of view, so let's see how this manifests itself over time. But with that, are there any other comments or questions?
I have a comment. I just, oops, I'm sorry, this is really loud. I can tell you that I look at this responsibility and this decision, and I want to enter it, into it with all of the information that I can, so that I can make the best decision as a board member. And I feel like asking for the additional time into March to look at what the numbers really tell us. I think it is responsible, at least me handling my responsibility to the best of my ability, to ask for the levy today so that we are protected and have the ability to turn around and ask for the correct number, once we have those figures. So I do fully respect Ted and your position, and I, I share much of what you think as well, and I understand, you know, why the applause took place. I just, I'm, I'm an individual that likes to be thorough, thoughtful, and when time is available to us, I like to take the time to be sure I'm making the best decision.
And I'd like to say, in my short time on the board, I'll tell you that this is the first time I think the board has actually made an attempt to reconcile what the levy is to our operating budget, looking back at, at the March date, that in years past, it was always a fait accompli, you pass the levy, and then we figure out how to spend the money. And so while I do appreciate your sentiments, I also believe that we don't have the data at this point to truly understand, and I respect the range that you've put forth, but that range, there's some other initiatives that aren't included in some of that thought, and so I think this is a very thoughtful way for us to make sure we, we act in a responsible manner to both what we've decided to be our main initiative, which is the students at the school balancing with our, with our taxation.
Yeah, and then there's also some minor languages and wordings and things like that that we've got to look at. So look, I, I think most people are going to appreciate this approach. I don't think everybody will appreciate this approach, but I think that, I'm pretty confident that if you let this stuff play out properly, and you keep an open mind, but be measured in what you do, the good stuff happens. And so I, it's easy for us to say things, and you've got to wait and see how things manifest themselves, but first and foremost, we've manifested a fantastic school environment. We've manifested a really good relationship across the staff and the teachers and the, and the students, and we've manifested a very secure financial balance sheet. So this is a work in progress, I look forward to sharing more. And I also, I look forward to coming back to you guys and talking about how we communicate after public comment and all those things, too. That, too, is coming. So with that, I think we should go ahead and go for a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Zinser?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
No.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May, I have a motion to accept the 2018, 2019 audit.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. I think Sally already spoke to this, clean audit, as clean as you can get, and in fact, commendations on how we use our internal processes to, to capture errors and malfeasance. Anybody wants to add anything else?
Just again, I think we missed an opportunity to serve the whole community, you know, as a board, we represent everybody, including the students. Students are first and foremost, and we're doing a great job in that. Some of the other areas, not so much. Having said that, since we do have a quorum, I've got to go feed my cat or something, so you guys have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon is not no longer with us. Ms. Zinser?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on. Adoption of resolution regarding the suspension and dismissal of an educational support staff May I have?
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, does, does anybody want to comment on this? Okay, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Zinser?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the settlement agreement and release regarding a consultant?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any, any questions here? Okay, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Zinser?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Approval, may I have a motion to approve the first reading of press issue 102?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, again, this was talked about earlier. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Ms. Zinser?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the human resources report as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I think that again was in our packets and self-explanatory. Is there any questions? All right, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Ms. Zinser?
Aye.
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items, including approval of disbursements, payrolls, and financial statements for October 2019, minutes of a regular meeting and workshop November 11th, 2019, minutes of an executive session November 11th, 2019. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Mr. Noble?
Aye.
Ms. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Weinbrenner?
Aye.
Dr. Nemecus?
Aye.
Mr. Lane?
Aye.
Ms. Zinser?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Foya requests, we had two, Hello College and Jennifer Neubauer both completed. Moving on to announcements, first semester exams are December 16th through 19th. I think we're very, very fortunate to have students joining us tonight, because I know tomorrow being the last day of tests before the final exam, it's a series of tests, it's really, really hard to get out and be here, so I appreciated that. Friday, December 20th is a teacher work day. Monday, December 23rd, winter break begins. School resumes on Monday, January 6th. Monday, January 20th is Martin Luther King Junior Day, there will be no school, and our next board meeting will be February 10th. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn the Lake Forest Community High School Board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a voice vote, please?
Aye.
Aye.